Annual Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, would you like to please send a roll call?
I'll be glad to. Shane Davis.
Here.
Who else is down here? Mr. Danny.
Hi.
How are you? Good.
I'm here.
Okay. What's your name? My name's Big Joe. Or am I here?
Yes, sir. You're President.
Yes, I'm here.
And our Jan Roberts is not here tonight.
Correct. So four out of five, we have a forum. In your Google Drive and online, you will find the minutes from the September meeting. Any comments, questions, concerns, corrections on those? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for approval in a minute.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for approval of the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
All second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Willie, you're up for the claims for the month of September.
Okay, I think you've all saw the claims and everything looks pretty well normal. We bought a few extra things. I see Park Park's not here, so I can't rip them, but they got new golf carts and a new piece of machinery and very nice, very nice. We don't have the Club Treasurers report. Don had a choice of either getting that ready or paying the people this week, so we chose we chose to pay the people, right, Don?
Darn right.
Yeah, so we are in the process of going with the new ADP payroll service, so any bugs worked out, it'll be fine.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the claims for the month of September?
So a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims for the month of September. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims are approved. Department reports. We're going to start with the Pendleton Police Department Chief Mark Carr.
Good evening. Pendleton Police Department report for September. Had Officer Shane Briggs and Officer Scott Bertram attend a forty-hour training session on crisis intervention. They'll be able to assist not only the officers of the department, firemen in the town, but also citizenry of the town in a crisis situation to debriefing and counseling type scenario that they're now trained to do. Captain Trailer Sergeant Brown and Officer Bertram attended a conference down Indianapolis consisting of inspirational speakers in law enforcement, cellphone technology, use of drones, and other related top law enforcement topics. A lot of people have had questions about the fleets in the parking lot up at the PD, so we now have all the Dodge drawing goes in. And currently, we had to reorder all the interior upfitting equipment because we had the other equipment for the Fords. Since we canceled that order, we had to order Dodge. So the Dodge equipment's showing up. You'll see some of the cars running around with stickers. So we've had them at the graphics place and they came back. So if anybody sees them, any feedback, just a little inside knowledge on the stickering system. So we try to put a lot of thought into what we're going to do each year, and I like muscle cars. So when we were going with the Fords, we chose what's called venomous font, which is what the Ford GT five hundred used. When we got rid of the Fords, we now have the Dodge, so the designer still liked that venomous font. And he sold me on the fact that Lee Iacocca worked for Ford before he went to Dodge. So we've moved that theme over to the Dodge. But if you notice on the bottom of the car, it has the 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 unit number for that vehicle, an American flag in a banner at the bottom, just like the PT five hundred car. And then on the back, we threw in the historic registry sticker. So I thought that was kind of nice on the back tailgate for a little little Pendletonism. And that's how that look has come about. So you'll see those start to we're hoping to get some of the equipment soon and we'll do the upfitting and then they'll be on the road. Park Fest went well. I don't believe the turnout was as big as last year. Don't know why really. The weather was good and everything. But as far as the event went, everybody had a good time. Fall Festival, Heritage Fair. Traffic's always an issue, but it's not to the point that it's a choking point that nobody can move. So there was good problems to have because I still like an active town. So it was a good event. The Pride event in town went as it should. I believe their security had some issues with some people, but they didn't call in law enforcement. Homecoming Parade again, great turnout, great weather, a lot of candy. In fact, so much candy, I don't think everyone got all of it until the next day when they cleaned it up. So that was a good event. One thing I added in this report, the flock cameras. I wanted everybody to realize that in the month of September, the flock cameras before we have in town, recorded and viewed three hundred nineteen thousand sixty-five vehicles. Of those three hundred nineteen thousand sixty-five vehicles, they hit on a total of four thousand seven hundred eighty-five. Now, those four thousand seven hundred eighty-five got hit on because of what we search as those cameras are reading those plates. And I included in the report customs violations, supervised release. So it just lets us know if somebody's on a prison release or parole and they're supposedly supervised, meaning they have to check in with their parole officers or what that they're moving through our town. Protective orders, protective interest, violent persons, missing persons, immigration violations, Canadian police information, gang or suspected terrorists, warrants, stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, sex offenders, missing children, suspended drivers, habitual traffic violators, which is a felony, expired registrations, and then someone that's deemed an extreme risk to protection orders. And for instance, the other day, I have it on my phone, so I got a ding. It was a stolen trailer. You bring up the picture. I drove downtown. There it goes through downtown. We got him at the gas station and the guy had actually just picked up his trailer from being picked up by another police agency from when it was stolen. So he got his double recovered. So that was pretty, pretty good. Total dispatched incidents for the month, one thousand seven hundred sixty-one, thirty crashes, ninety-two criminal arrests, eight juvenile arrests, one hundred and seventy-six Indiana code warnings, one hundred and forty-seven citations, thirteen ordinance warnings, and three ordinance citations. And the only other thing, and I want to touch on just to give you guys a heads up coming up here in the future, April eighth, twenty twenty-four, the world is coming to an end in Indiana. And what that is, is we are in the path of totality, reference the solar eclipse. Luckily, this happened in Kentucky in twenty seventeen, and they were able to see the melee and craziness of the people that chase the solar eclipse. Indiana is expecting six hundred and thousand, six hundred thousand migrating people from the West Coast to the East Coast following this event. Because we're in the path of totality, it is the best viewing is right here in this area in Indiana. You can Google it and see the actual line. Monroe County, just stress that. Tell everybody go to Monroe County because it's optimum there. But Pendleton's going to be great. And there are a lot of issues that the incident in twenty seventeen shed light on. Get it shed light. That just came to Lucas would have been proud of that.
Yeah.
But with that being said, we learned from some of their stuff, and some of that stuff is simply this. For example, a lot of the high schools did e-learning days, and then they rented out their parking lot to make money. But then those five hundred people in cars sitting in the parking lot had to egress after the event. There is no after solstice party. They found that people just leave. Well, five hundred people leaving the high school all at once, all the people parked on the shoulders of every roadway in town. And then when the roadways are filled or the sides are filled, you just stop in the middle of the road and then you're stopped. You can't get emergency vehicles through. There's people having medical conditions in the traffic. You can't get to them. It 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 becomes a thing. And with that being said, I haven't spoke to Mr. Hall yet to encourage him for e-learning and not to use his parking lot. Private homes, there's rumor renting tent spots up to a thousand dollars. But everybody needs to remember it's it's in April and the fields are mud, the yards are mud. So now you got vehicles stuck in mud. You got vehicles out of fuel. It's cold. There's a whole lot of issues. And we just went to Fort Ben yesterday and we're briefed on this through the DNR. And as we get closer, we'll have more information. But I'm telling you, it's not something just we're going to have a an eclipse. It's a big deal, especially there's a there's a Facebook page with over two million followers just on that page. That's how much interest. And so we're expecting, like I said, six hundred thousand. They compared that to seventy-one football stadiums being released all at once and have to deal with that.
Is there a timeframe on this?
It's three o'clock.
Three in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah. But during, prior to the the event, it's it's doing its little thing. And so everybody, they want to see that, and then they want to see the total and then the after. But what they learned was people don't stay. You got the group that wants to chase, so they're going east. And you got the other ones, because it's on Monday, I think, they want to go home because they work on Tuesday. DNR has fifty-four properties within the path, and they are all rented out, the lodging, the tent spots, and the camper spots. Fifty-four, yeah, DNR spots. Now, DNR admitted three years ago when they came up with this idea, it was to make money, and then they realized they don't want any part of this. They they made the the plan that if you rented a room, they want it rented two nights, and they were hoping people would stay and filter out afterwards a little smoother. But because people have to go to work on Tuesday, they know that's not going to happen. And it's a bit, I've got a whole, I took five pages of notes yesterday. So as we get closer, we're going to have some meetings about.
NASA says it's the optimum path.
Yeah, yeah.
But then it it goes to that forty-five degree angle. It looks like it almost flips the optimum, not the path, the middle of it, looks like Henry County.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, it's
It's us. Yeah, it's us. Yeah, I've already heard a rumor that Park Fest was talking about having a thing in the field down there. Well, it's thirty-three percent chance on that day that the weather's clear in Pendleton. That's already been decided or discussed. And then simple things like, I don't know when they don't winterize the bathrooms in the park. So if you've got all these people in Falls Park, are you going to de-winterize the bathrooms? And if so, there's a cost there. The guy that's sitting there that says, well, I'll get fuel, I'm going to run my heat because it's cold. It's April eighth. I'm going to get fuel after the event. Well, they found, because I have in Kentucky, all the fuel was gone, all the food was gone, all the toilet paper is gone because of this migrating group of people. And it's a it's a big deal. So I'm on it. We're looking into it. We're going to have some local meetings. At the Fort Ben yesterday, the sheriff was there. And then the chief of Alex, so we as chiefs, we'll get together and we'll get with the fire chiefs. So it's, there's talk about, for example, like right now, you wouldn't want your ambulance sitting where it's at because it can't get out to where it needs to be. So there's talk about strategic med events on north side of town, south side of town, east. And then, of course, that's all manpower. So I've already put out the order, no days off on that day. Hamilton County did that. Hamilton County put out a rule already. No officers are working extracurricular at Connaught Prairie, Ruhoff, all those venues are planning events.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to figure that out. But their officers over in Hamilton County will not be working anything but the road. And even the road, just because I'm in a police car, doesn't mean I can make it down. So it's it's definitely interesting. I'll have more information for it.
Awesome.
Yeah. And that's it unless everybody has something.
Any questions for Mark?
What do these six aren't valid people do for a living for traveling? That's what I want.
On Monday.
Where the kids at?
I am assuming, I am assuming, Willie, that I'm going to get a chance to ask one of them.
I think we should, we would board it.
So I know the car was closing that day. Like, I mean, we're it's, we're going to feel it, even if it's
The school.
Yeah.
So another another person on my list to go talk to, simple stuff like this, I am I. No gravel distribution that day, no, no construction that day. I don't need a triaxle full of stone coming through.
Yeah.
I don't need anything in it extra. If if the vendors, and we'll get the word out between now and then, the vendors in town, hey, this is going to happen. You either shut your doors or you get your food items the day before or two days before.
Better call Amazon.
That's the thing is even if we don't necessarily post it, all of the areas around us, we're going to see increased traffic regardless of what we do that day. So we need to make sure we're planned accordingly.
Well, Highway forty-six between Columbus and Nashville, DNR property all along there. And what the thoughts is, if you can picture it in your mind, because I even drew a drawing just to remind me of it. Everybody's driving down forty-six. Here comes the eclipse. Things are getting darker. Okay, this is cool. I pull off to the shoulder. Well, now me and my family are on the road. I want to watch, so I have two choices. I'm driving and crashing because that's going to happen, or I the shoulder's full. So I just stop because this isn't going to happen again until twenty twenty forty-four, I believe it was the map. So I'm going to look at. Well, now, as soon as I stop in the road, shoulder's full, I'm full, that guy's going to stop, shoulder's full, boom. And that's going to happen. It's already been shown. High sixty-nine is going to happen. Nine sixty, and we've got five major roadways. It's going to happen.
So where does that path almost coincide with I sixty-nine?
Up to Fort White.
So they're really nerdy to that.
Right. But then if you like to partake in anything that may enhance the souls, the eclipse you want. And the state's already come up with a cool little logo, so that tells you that it's important. I saw the look. It was pretty cool.
Anything else for Mark? All right, thanks. Thanks for your details.
Thank you.
Court Judge George is not on Zoom. He submitted us a report in advance. We're winding down court operations. There's a shred date that's happening. There's a lot of activity going on upstairs as we wind down the court. Park, I assume Aaron's not on Zoom. Aaron's not here. He submitted a report along with a safety inspection for the new playground. Scott, are you going to present at Hannah's?
No, I'm going to present. It's there.
Hannah is off-site at an informational meeting for proposed development, so that's why she's not here tonight. Otherwise, her report is in the drive. And then Scott, you're up.
And just in time. Okay, so a couple of things have happened. You know, we're starting to get into the design of Elm Street reconstruction. It looks like the park report. There's the planning report.
It next one. His looks like a PowerPoint. There you go.
So the offer for the Mill Street property was accepted. We're just going through our due diligence. We haven't signed yet. This is, we're doing a phase one environmental. Everybody knows where that property is, right? The Triangle property. Wolfie's Restaurant, we've got that minor drainage project complete. I've got a photo here in a little bit. They'll show you that. The bidding, the bids came in as expected, what we expected for a fee, I think it was three hundred sixty thousand for the state road nine waterline extension that basically comes in down Hunsinger's Farm, down to nine hundred South, and then that's going to connect into a waterline extension too that will be ours, but that's being constructed by Ag One-on-One. And then if the, remember the Vectra Gas Project that tore up Palm Avenue and Main Street, how awful that looked? Thanks to you guys, an ordinance that we passed two, two and a half years ago that said if you do more than three street cuts within a block or within a thousand feet, then you're responsible, pave the whole street. They did such a wonderful job of tearing up those streets. They did. They had to come in and do a wonderful job of paving. That's turned out really well. The only hiccup we have, and Ricky's getting a sign up, is that because they went down Main Street as you're going north, it looks like Pendleton Avenue keeps going straight instead of bends around. So we're afraid some people who are from out of town and not familiar with that will continue to go straight, not realize opposing traffic's coming around the curve. So we're going to put some additional signs up. If we can scroll down to the pictures. So that's that's a shot of how that's on Pendleton Avenue, but then in the far distance, that's Main Street. You can see what I'm talking about. So if you're not familiar, like I said, that can be a little bit hairy. Next photo also includes part of what they tore up was the formatory road between the golf course and Pendleton Avenue, where that new intersection that was reconstructed during the McCarty Drain Project. So that whole area now looks a lot nicer and that entrance to the park looks wonderful with all the color of the trees and everything, right? Then last photo, ooh, that's not coming in well. That is basically from the roundabout back towards Wolfie's on the looking, would be looking to the west on the north side of our state street. You can see the get-go. And if you were to keep going straight, that's I sixty-nine. So anyway, that's one of our minor projects that we would not have been able to do if we didn't have a storm like this here. Any questions?
Any questions for Scott, guys? Okay. Awesome. All right, we're going to move on to old business. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-five, we've kicked this around. This is the third meeting, the second read for ordinance twenty-three twenty-five, limiting overnight parking where noted. This is the clean copy that we said we would do second read on tonight that allows for towing of vehicles parked between the hours of two AM and five AM in designated public parking spaces that are identified as prohibited. We've talked about this a lot, but we finally got the real copy of it. Any questions or comments regarding it? No? Okay. If no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval on second read.
So.
I have a motion for approval of twenty-three twenty-five. Do I have a second?
It's not good.
I have a motion and a second for ordinance twenty-three twenty-five regulating overnight parking in designated areas. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next up is the two thousand twenty-four budget. So with that, I will open up a public hearing. You will see, sorry, twenty-three twenty-nine, the twenty-two twenty-four budget. You'll see those amounts on the state form here. Any questions for Willie or Court Treasurer regarding this? Any que, oh, yeah.
The only comment I have is that the chief said, you know, it's a process of remote communication process. It's a difficult thing, but we try to streamline as possible.
Yeah. Everybody upstairs does a great job. Budget season is is a tenuous time. But this year, I think we're all getting our sea legs on it a little bit, and also the addition of REED Financial Group helping has been a huge help. Any comments from the public regarding the budget? You have a comment?
A little bit stupid, but
Okay.
I watched Ben, police officers nighttime patrol and makes six digits a year. You're true.
If we could, we'll talk about salary ordinance in just a moment, and that's where we'll see those numbers. Do you mind if we won't that until we talk about salary? Okay.
Sure.
I have a comment too.
Okay.
Just regarding everything to go along with what Chief said, working on the, helping with the fire territory budget, every time I had a question and contacted the Court Treasurer's office, Karen was, got me the information within a day. It's been very smooth and it did help out a lot.
Yeah, it it was tough, but we made it through. If no other public comment regarding the budget, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval of twenty twenty-four budget.
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four budget. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the twenty twenty-four budget. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, budget is approved. Now moving on to twenty-three thirty, the salary ordinance for the town of Pendleton. Now, I just want to make a note of this because in years past, we've had questions. This salary ordinance does not address Falls Park employees or Fire Territory employees. Both of those entities submit their own salary resolution or salary ordinance. And so you will notice that those two entities are not reflected in the town of Pendleton salary ordinance for twenty twenty-four. Any comments from up here regarding this? No? Okay, now we can talk about police wage if you'd like.
I got more to talk about than just the budget.
Okay.
So whenever, whenever you're putting the figures. If I do.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. No problem. Okay. Do we have any comments, concerns, questions regarding this? One other thing that I'd like just to mention is that the entire time I've been on the council, so since basically this time in twenty twenty, it has been a goal of ours to present the salary ordinance in tandem with the budget. And so this is the first year that we successfully did that. I think it clears up a lot of stuff as far as trying to meet four times in December to get stuff done. And so I appreciate everybody's willingness to put in some extra work this fall so that we can get this done in tandem with our budget and then we're done for a minute on the finances. So if we don't have any other comments or questions regarding salary ordinance, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second for twenty-three thirty, the twenty-two twenty-four salary ordinance? Awesome. Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Sure. All right, new business. We're going to open a public hearing here in just a second regarding twenty-three oh eight, the additional appropriation for local road and street. We submitted the the notification in the newspaper and all of that for this additional appropriation. So with that, I will open the public hearing. This is just transferring money that is that was unappropriated to the line item for usage. Basically, we can't spend money that's not appropriated. And so we have to move things from unappropriated money to an actual fund to be able to use that money. And so that is what this is in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Scott, do you have any comments regarding this, so this local road and street?
Yeah, so the revenue that we received is about two hundred fifty thousand. Local road and street, we never really appropriated. We held it back in that fund projects. And so this is really moving a hundred twenty-five thousand from the fund to something that was appropriated basically zero dollars. So this doesn't exceed what the revenue was for the year. Karen and I are going to change how we do this and probably with, after we consult more detail with REED Group on their recommendations. But basically, what we're going to do going forward is we'll appropriate a category called projects with so that the money is appropriated ahead of time. That's not necessarily guaranteed. Spend it all, but at least it's appropriated. We're going to start doing, I forget what the form number is. It's a not required form, but a recommended form from the state that has your capital outlay fund. So that that will be consolidated onto that form and you'll be able to see what what our property tax and other tax revenues dollars being What our property tax and other tax revenues dollars being.
Great.
That makes sense.
Any comment from the public during public hearing on this item twenty-three oh eight additional appropriation? Any comments up here, questions, concerns? Okay, if not, I will close the public meeting and um, entertain a motion for approval of resolution twenty-three oh eight additional appropriation for local roads.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of resolution twenty-three oh eight additional appropriation for local road and street, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Since that is a resolution, we do not need two reads on that, um. Next up, resolution twenty-three oh nine intergovernmental agreement for building inspection services. This is being proposed with the blessing of our building inspector Brett Mabry. Basically what this allows is if the county, and Jeff, you can hop in at any time. If the county building commissioner or building inspector, I guess is really the proper term. Uh, is taken out of commission by illness or a situation that it allows our building inspector. Uh, to serve in that capacity in their absence, is that correct?
Correct, that, or be the vacation or something like that, or in the case of uh. Maybe we're extremely busy and it just happened that Madison County Inspector is available, we could call him, it's almost like a mutual aid. So, but the uh, they will remain, uh, the Madison County Inspector will be a Madison County employee, but he will. Inspect to our standards based on the army municipality and vice versa. They'll always be our, the Pendleton, Brett will always be our employees, it will be our, our insurance, we'll pay him any, all the work area in time that he. But in order to do that, to prevent any ghost employment situation, you have to have a written, demo, such as this, so this. This just allows Pendleton and Madison County to hold hands and help each other. I think the county person.
Yes, the county has already approved it.
They proved that on platitude.
So, um, I think this is a good thing, cause one of the things we're noticing, it's odd. I've had a lot of vehicles in the buildings lately, it's. So, a lot of times, uh. Before the fire department will have, allow vehicles to be moved. Want to make sure that it's gonna be structurally okay to move it, it's not a class of building. Always just good to have, fire department likes to have another set of eyes come out and look at it. Kids would be in the wee hours or on the weekends and we. Brett, Brett and I have been called out a handful of times. So that's the time where I think we'll actually hardly notice.
Great, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of resolution twenty-three oh nine intergovernmental agreement for building inspection services.
So moved.
I got a vote, alright, I've got a motion and a second for resolution twenty-three oh nine, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion here. Okay, ordinance twenty-three thirty-four, amending the unified development ordinance. Uh, last week at planning commission, they gave a favorable recommendation. For these. Five edits to the unified development ordinance, again, like I say, every month that we get this, we have to really, um. Give thanks to our planning commission that spends a whole lot of time. What we would consider in the weeds to be going through this stuff and trying to figure out. What is the right way to implement some of this stuff and so. Last week's meeting was no different, they spent a good amount of time discussing and approving these resolutions. Or these resolutions, these edits to the unified development ordinance. Their part of passing these and giving them a favorable recommendation counts as the first read. Um, and so we are just doing secondary tonight on this in effect and so. Uh, we will only do one vote on this because theirs counted as the. So, um, any questions regarding these changes to unified development ordinance? Nope, okay, then I will entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion, do I have a second for approval of twenty-three thirty-four amending the U V O?
It's not good.
I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three thirty-four amending U V O, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Okay, we've made it through old and new business and now we will open it up for public comment. You have five minutes, if you'd like to come to the podium, yeah, and just state your name.
I'm in the bravery, I've been here all my life, some of you might know me, some of you don't. Doesn't matter, I didn't, never thought I'd come to the day where I would have fear for the rest of my life in my hometown. I was shot in the back. By Captain Briggs. Crucified, bounced off the blacktop, cracked my skull, handcuffs on his arm, I can't play guitar anymore. Now. I gotta see my grandkids all the time, I gotta drive from Pendleton, I find out you guys hiring this nighttime patrol. I'm trying to get federal suits against this guy, trying to put him in prison. He's hired, now he's a night patrolman, if I need a police officer at night. And I call the police, who's gonna come? The guy that tried to kill me in Anderson. He shot Ariel Dalton, Google, Google his name up, Ariel Dalton out of Elwood, shot her, twenty-two years old, shot her twice in the back, shot me three times. I got the shirt on to show the five holes, if you wanna see it. He lied everything on his affidavit. His charges were all dismissed, everything was lies. I fear for my life and the rest of my life, along as he's here. I'm gonna try and put him in prison. Don't get me wrong. I'm not done, I've been to the FBI, I've been to the state, everyone wants to sweep me under the rug. There was no evidence involved, he couldn't bring any evidence to court. No dash cam, no body cam available, that's one reason why I was dismissed, but the FBI found a dash cam after he transfers to Pendleton. He left his dash cam behind, but it was modified. It shows him standing at my car threatening to taser me. Don't know why, and then it shows me interlocking my fingers in front of his car getting handcuffed. It doesn't show me getting out of my car, walking to his car, throwing myself on his hood, him trying to over bend my fingers, me snapping out of his hole. And him shooting me in the back three times with his taser, me falling back, doesn't show any of that. So I'm not, FOIA is, FOIA means nothing to me. I thought FOIA was gonna mean something, I was gonna get all this evidence, you only get what they want you to have. I already know this, so the FBI swept me under the rug. Todd Rock, Raketa's swept me under the rug, everyone swept me in the rug, I feel like I'm gonna sweep on the rug again, but I do wanna redress my character. I fear for my life. I don't know how much time I got left, I can barely see anymore because of concussion and the cracked skull and everything I got out of this. Damage to my left hand beyond belief, I can only play keyboard now with my left hand, can't play guitar anymore. My grandkids hate it, this happened on my granddaughter's birthday, trying to make money, go to her birthday party. Gotta go to Menards, get a piece, piece of time, this guy ambushed me. The second time I saw him, he came to the house at nine thirty-five, the house I was working on. Going to Wise and his whole neighborhood, I think he saw my car, but that's another story. Point is. This is my hometown, I just never thought I would live my last few days in fear. Now, when I go see my grandkids, I usually go there every day and I leave at night. I gotta drive through Pendleton to go home. I've already passed Briggs a couple of times, he hasn't noticed me, but he will. You probably noticed Ariel Dalton too, she's trying to get him too, there's probably more out there, he's got a pattern, you guys hired this guy. He's all great on your side, but out here on the constituent side, no, he's not so great. He's a predator. Just wanted to know that.
Your comments, we've part of public record, we, we do not comment on personnel and town council, but thank you for coming. Any other public comment? Okay, with that, anything from up here before I adjourn? Okay, I'll adjourn, thank you, six forty.